... Your name? Barbados, your. Ken Killian?
Yes.
Mike DeLecky?
Here.
Mary Nichols?
Yes.
John Miller?
First on the agenda tonight are two public hearings. The first is ordinance 11-28, amending sections of Chapter 22 with regard to planned unit development revisions. Staff presentation?
Okay, this is a long list of changes to the ordinance, multiple sections to the zoning ordinance, and it's basically a housekeeping or a follow-up measure to make changes that are necessary based on the previous code change. When we made the change to modify the process on how planning developments are approved, they previously were done as a conditional use permit. We changed it to a physical zoning, as a separate zoning district. So now we have to go back and modify other sections of the code where it makes reference to planning developments as a conditional use permit. So most of it is very straightforward, changes to the other ordinance to make that distinction on how they're approved, and that's why I considered a housekeeping measure. There are a couple of changes that I would say are a little bit outside of that scope. Specifically, Section 9 of this ordinance, there was an issue that we kind of realized after that past ordinance was adopted as far as signage within planned unit development. Specifically, if you've got a mixed-use development and there's a business in there, and obviously you know that business and you can approve that sign at that time, but if that business changes somewhere down the years ahead and they want to propose different signage, what exactly are the rules that would apply to that building or that business? So what we're proposing is that the time the planning and development is approved, at that time you have to specify which zoning district regulations would apply to that development. So for instance, if it's a PUD in the downtown area, then you'd say the B2 Business District, signage regulations will apply to that property in the future. So it eliminates that confusion for in the future. So that will be identified when the PUD is approved. The other one is, it's kind of a housekeeping measure of a different manner. When I was going through the conditional use permit section, it makes reference to planning developments that are approved but not begun as far as construction or implementation of that. The current ordinance says that that approval would expire within six months. We made a change several years ago to variants, which had the same language. We changed it from six months to 12 months because they get approved in the fall or this time of the year and they could start construction until spring, and a lot of times by the time they're ready to start, their variants had expired, and it could be the same situation with the conditional use permit. So I'm recommending that be changed as well to a 12-month period to give them a little bit more time to get that started. Other than that, like I mentioned, it's basically straightforward changes to the rest of the ordinances. Are there any questions?
The planned unit development, is that also must start within 12 months? Is it now not a conditional use permit?
There is a time period within the ordinance. I don't recall exactly what that is.
Any other questions for Joe?
This also extended the notification region, is that correct?
Yes, that was a change that the council discussed when we adopted the previous ordinance. So we modified the notification requirements to recognize that change. From 200 feet to 500 feet.
Anything else for Joe? There were no public statements in favor, against, or in general submitted. Council discussion?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to second to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
How many counsel action?
I move to approve the changes to Chapter 22 in the Zone Code Planning Unit Developments. And also included the unrelated change of the signage issue.
Second. The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second under public hearings tonight is ordinance 11-29, repealing and recreating Section 22.12 with regard to non-conforming uses of structures and lots in the B2 Central Business District. Staff presentation?
Okay, this was an issue that was brought to our attention by the owners of the Jenner Towers project. They're going through a process right now to do some refinancing, bring in additional investors, and do some renovations or internal renovations of that property. There was a concern that was brought up because the property, as it sits there right now, is legal non-conforming use, is a legal non-conforming structure, and there was some concern that if that building were to be destroyed, that they would not be able to rebuild, which obviously scares away any investors in that project. So they had asked if we could take a look at some potential zoning changes that would alleviate that potential problem. What we're proposing is a change to Section 2212 of the zoning ordinance, which addresses non-conforming uses of structures and lots, and basically making a modification that says that non-conforming properties in the B2 Central Business District that are non-conforming because they have residential use and residential on the ground floor are allowed to rebuild if they are destroyed, with some conditions. They have to obtain a building permit within 12 months. They basically have to build to the same footprint, or they can't increase any non-conforming nature of the structure, and that they have to comply with any building codes at the time that they rebuild. So this should address the concern that the owners of that property raised. It does not affect just that property. There are, I think I identified, six other properties in the downtown area that are existing non-conforming residential properties that they would essentially be in the same situation. If they were destroyed, they would also have the opportunity to rebuild. Are there any questions?
There were no public statements in favor or against or in general. Counsel discussion?
And the reason for including these other seven properties is just so they don't have to come back?
Well, I'm just making aware of what properties would be impacted by this. The change would affect all properties in the B2 zoning district. So I just was pointing out which properties would be impacted by this code change.
Because of saying a precedent.
Yeah, this change is not just for that property.
It's just for one property or these other properties?
It's all properties within the B2 zoning district.
No, it would be all of these properties. Joe, would you clarify, does the change apply to all of these properties?
It applies to the B2 zoning district, so it would apply to all properties within that district. That are in the same situation. These are the ones that I was able to identify that would be in a similar situation.
So it applies to 75 North or plus 55 North, 155 East, all of those?
Right. So if any of those properties, if this is approved, any of those properties are destroyed, they would also be able to rebuild.
Without coming back to the council?
Correct.
Because we've changed this ordinance.
Correct.
Motion to close public hearing.
No move?
Second.
The motion is second to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
How many counsel action?
I would move to approve the changes as proposed to Chapter 22 zoning code, all non-conforming use in structures as pertaining to B2.
DeLecky?
Get it got there. The motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the November 22nd and November 29th council meetings. Item B, even though, see the financial report for November. The appointments to board the commissions tonight. I'm pointing Joe Whitmer to the housing authority. E, licenses in your packet, we have Class A combination beer and liquor license for 5D Mile, operators one and under two years licenses as indicated, and taxi and taxi driver licenses. And item F is Resolution 11-32, election officials for the 2012 and 2013 term. Is there any item on which you'd prefer separate discussion and action?
Move approval of the consent calendar as published. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side. The motion carries. Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, and we ask that those speaking, please limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Tonight, Mike Mayo is indicating he'd like to speak about something. I'm not sure what he just said here. So Mike Mayo, please.
That's Michael Mayo, 375 South Chestnut, here in Platteville. I'll address this to you, Mr. DeLecky, because you are the president of the council. I do understand that all the council are sworn in to their, and take a valid oath to their, for their positions, correct?
Yes.
I'm not being facetious. I'm asking you a valid question.
Valid question, I don't know, but you can ask it. We take an oath, we...
You take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, correct?
Mr. Mayo, this is comments, observations, and petitions.
That's correct. My comment, my comment is simply this. My comments are simply this. As a body that's elected and sworn in, and especially today with how many servicemen we have overseas, why does this body not open its meeting with a pledge of allegiance to our flag? I understand you want to get home. We all do. But I think it's within common decency that when this, this whole town supposedly is gathered together, that we at least pledge allegiance to the flag that we're supposed to be honoring, and to the oaths and everything else that we take against that flag. And I think that's what should be done, and in accordance of Robert's Rules of Order, those are one of the things that need to be done. Thank you.
Will the guys tonight, the reports, committee reports, tourism commission?
Nothing to add.
Roundtree Gallery?
Nothing to add.
Plan Commission, I have nothing to add, Steve.
I have nothing to add.
Police Fire Commission, I have nothing to add to that. Airport Commission. Museum Board?
Nothing to add, but I want to remind folks that the Christmas festivities are going on at the museum this Sunday. The Platteville Corral will be performing at 3:00, and of course, the Christmas exhibits are up through December 30.
Thank you. Commission on the agent?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Okay. Under other reports, we have the downtown mixed-use development timeline, November airport financial report, November water and sewer expenditures and revenues to the attorney, item I statement, and department progress reports. If there are any items on that list on which you have questions or comments. Moving right along to action items now. Item A is Resolution 11-33, authorizing the 2012 salaries and rates of pay. Motion to approve. Our, our, Patrice, yeah, there was someone who was... The motion is second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I do have a question. Are these published in the paper?
No.
They're published.
Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B under action tonight is Resolution 11-34, Emergency Medical Services EMS Fee Increase. This is to increase the service fee. It was unchanged in 2009, 2010, 2011. It went up to 3.6 percent. Any comments?
I just had one question, Mike. I talk about contracted services, like it's going to be Platteville, and I think it's in high school football?
Platteville High School Football Games, yep.
Is that typical for the, you have an ambulance there during the...
Yes, yes.
And the, the school district pays for that?
Yes. $125 an hour.
It's just football, it's not any other sport?
I can say with certainty that it's football. I believe there may be some at track and field, but I'm not sure.
I have another question.
Care to make a motion?
I just have one other. This references Savoda? I can't even say it.
Okay. Yep, that's the billing company.
That's our bill.
Yep. I don't know how to say it either.
I don't know what to say.
If no motion, we'll just move on to the next item.
I move that we adopt Resolution 11-34, establishing Ginnie's raise for Platteville Emergency Medical Services.
Second. The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C, under action tonight is ordinance 11-30, repealing and recreating Chapter 2.03 with regard to polling places. This would move the District 3 polling place in Pioneer Student Center to Olds Lake Hall.
Move to approve the change of District 3 polling place from Pioneer Student Center to Olds Lake Hall.
Second.
The motion is second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C under action tonight is changes related to concealed carry of weapons and associated cash deposits. This is ordinance 11-32, 33, and 34, and what this does is adjust the terminology and the fines, if you will, or citation amounts for these various elements here, including failure to display concealed carry license, as well as to failure to notify Department of Address or change. Does anyone have?
I think you could add one more thing, and that is that it does a little bit of bookkeeping and updates some of our other ordinances that interact with this. Another bookkeeping matter like earlier.
We need to do this all separately, or we can do a long one, also.
I think you probably should do them separately.
Can we see, has we had a penalty?
Well, previous...
This would be establishing penalties.
Right.
Anyone have a motion about 11-32?
I move to approve 11-32.
Motion is second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
11-33? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
11-34?
Move that ordinance number 11-34?
Second.
The motion is second. Killian and Nichols. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
11-34?
Move that ordinance number 11-34?
Second.
The motion is second. Killian and Nichols. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item E, under action, is employee handbook. This is the personnel policy rules and regulations. This was discussed a couple weeks ago at our last meeting. Are you any to add or talk about with that, or?
I simply want to mention that at our discussion, we went over the handbook, and staff has made the updated changes at your request. There's about two pages of changes that you had requested, and we've implemented those. The sick time banking options is what I believe remains outstanding. That's still an issue that we have to discuss, and I believe, yes, that is for the work session today. So if you are inclined to approve the handbook, you could do so without addressing sick time banking options, or you could approve it as proposed.
Thank you.
I move to approve the employee handbook with the exception of the issue of banking sick time. Second.
I have a discussion or question?
Go ahead.
On page 10 of the proposal on methods of compensation, under B, where it says the, or comp time, I was always under the impression that salary, the employees, and hourly, we were eliminating both comp time. In this proposal, it has the comp time for the hourly.
That is correct. As this proposal is written, hourly employees maintain the ability to use comp time.
I was under the impression and always thought we were always dealing with totally eliminating comp time. So I'd like to readdress this sometime either January or February, if nobody wants to address it now.
I understood it was the salary.
We can bring her back in general, if we want some more to do. We pass this now, and we come back to talk a lot more.
That's what I like to do.
Other discussion? The motion to approve, with the exception of the sick time. Right, right. The motion to approve without, with the exception of the sick time. Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Motion carries.
Item F is a professional consulting services contract for the Innovation Center Market Analysis and Feasibility Study for the City of Platteville and UW-Platteville. This is the contract for which we've already received a grant of, I think, $25,000, correct?
Yes, this is a contract that we are working with the university on. We had a brief, very brief discussion about this last, at our last meeting. The city has received a $25,000 grant. We've also received a $5,000 donation from Alliance Energy, and are applying for another $5,000 donation from Alliance Energy in 2012. And what this contract would do would be to engage the services of Vierbecker and Associates to put together a feasibility study on whether or not it would make sense for the city and the university to pursue the development of a research park for university projects.
Then how much is you did Platteville contribute?
At this time, there is $20,000 in the budget for 2012 to contribute toward this project.
Who's budget from?
I'm sorry, excuse me, from the city, the city of Platteville. There's $20,000 in the budget for next year.
Right, but in UW-Platteville, it's contributing...
The remainder, so...
$45,000?
Forty-five.
It's 45 to 50, yeah. And there are opportunities for some cost overruns in the, in the contract based on travel and printing, postage kind of issues.
So at this point in time, the city does, is contributing 50,000 to this project. 25,000 through a grant received, 5,000 through another grant received. So that is 30 and 20 or 50. Is that correct?
You can make that statement. I think the Alliance Energy grant or donation was to the university.
Okay.
And the CDBG grant was something only the city was eligible for. I think as a, as a community, we need to look at this more of as a partnership.
Right.
It will cost our taxpayers about 20,000 to do the study, and it'll cost the university more than that. But it is still a partnership.
And it is. The total project cost is expected now to exceed, with travel expenses, it appears, $100,000, but a little less than 100.
I believe it'll be just less than 100. That's correct.
Anything else?
And Brian drew up the...
Yes. When the steering committee selected Vierbecker and Associates as the firm to do the study, I put the city attorney in touch with Vierbecker representatives, and together they came up with the enclosed contract.
Well, I thought it was thorough. I would vote for the contract agreement with Vierbecker.
Motion is second. In further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under information and discussion items this week, item A is the water and sewer expenses for TIF districts. The Water and Sewer Commission has asked that the city councilman allow the use of TIF funds to reimburse water and sewer utility for their expenses in TIF districts. The staff recommend creating a city policy.
We briefly discussed this at our last meeting, and if you recall, there was a motion to table. The motion to table unfortunately did not specifically say when you wanted it back or if you wanted it back. There was discussion saying that you wanted, you wanted to talk about it again at another budget time. Without having that in the motion, I felt it was important for us to address it again. And if you would like it tabled until the budget time, please signify so in a motion.
What's information tonight?
I can follow up on that and let you guys know via email or something. Okay.
Okay. Next, under information and discussion is the Roundtree Commons Neighborhood Parking Plan. This was kind of held over from last time. We were kind of running late. It didn't seem to end up getting its fair share of discussion. Some question about why it's been information twice in a row. I intend to vote for it, so it wasn't certain to try to prevent that from happening, so. Any questions or comments on those items?
I have a question. Marquee Avenue from the Roundabout North and Southwest Road from Marquee West is now noted orange. Permit parking and two-hour parking. Am I to believe then that we are not going to have, that we will have overnight parking on those streets? Because currently, there is no overnight parking on those streets. And I support continuing no overnight parking.
I believe the intent was to keep the current regulations as they are. You'll notice that in some areas, there was no parking right now, and under this map, the, those areas would continue to be no parking. So in your question, I would argue that there would not be overnight parking at that location. Yeah, we are, we're not changing the existing restrictions. We're simply adding another layer.
Because in the ordinance, it doesn't say, in the ordinance, it doesn't say that it should-
Actually, there's probably another ordinance that says that there's no overnight parking there, or our official traffic map would designate that. And we're not proposing to change that.
Other comments about this?
I have a question as to who's going to pay for the increased costs of monitoring the parking and writing the tickets and so forth. Is the city going to pay for it? Is the city going to be reimbursed by the university? The question is cost.
At this time, we expect any additional staff time to be minimal. We don't have a built-in factor to who's going to absorb that cost, so the default would be we would consider it part of our existing budget. I don't believe it, we, there, there is not a need for an additional officer at this point to regulate this. It's expected that officers driving through town will notice if someone doesn't have the parking pass. And if they do notice that, then they would write the corresponding citation.
That's around the source for us right there, so. The costs that might occur from community policing service officers or something is likely to be offset by that.
Is there a possibility that the university could carry out this particular program?
I did raise that question at a meeting I've had with the university regarding the patrol of Roundtree Commons. We don't have an answer to that question yet. We're still conversing over the issue. We, we'd like to engage the services of the university's legal counsel to help facilitate an agreement regarding Roundtree Commons, and certainly this parking area could become part of that agreement.
Thank you.
Charlie Bull is going to get, he had a couple comments about this, Charlie?
Good evening, Charlie Bull. I live very near the, I guess, development going on on Chestnut Street. I support the creation of a permitted parking system in the vicinity of the Chestnut Street Residence Hall. Personally, I'd rather see a much stricter, more stringent policy, but the neighbors in the community met with Mr. Burkey and the neighbors developed this proposal. It's a product of compromise. It's not what I wanted. It's not what anybody really wanted. It's a product of compromise. I do want to highlight just a couple of points. I believe the final ordinance should state in plain English that residents of the Residence Hall are not eligible for parking permits, including commuter parking permits, should they ever be authorized. The final ordinance should clearly state that commuter parking permits shall not be issued in this particular parking area. I also think to address Mr. Killian's point that all costs associated with implementing and enforcing the parking restrictions should be borne by the community as a whole, or perhaps more appropriately, the owners and operators of the Residence Hall, and not the neighbors affected by the policy who are going to have to get the permits. When the council approved the Residence Hall, the council acknowledged that the development would have a negative impact on some of the neighboring properties. But the council also determined that those negatives were going to be outweighed by the positive impact the development would have on the community as a whole. Many neighbors considered the imposition of permitted parking to be one of those negative consequences of the development. Since the benefits to the community as a whole are said to outweigh any imposition on the neighbors, all costs should be borne by the community as a whole, or better yet, by the true beneficiaries of the development, its owners and its operators. Thank you.
Anything else about that? Item C under information tonight is the zoning ordinance amendment regarding the petition process for the limited occupancy residential overlay district, or commonly known as RLO. Dick Rundell and John Duesbury and Martin Hurbron. About there, about that. Item D is the ordinance amending official traffic map. Ordinance amending the official traffic map, no parking here to corner of Washington.
We've had a public, a public, member of the public request that we set back the sign that says, no parking here to corner on Washington Street with approximately another two or three car lengths to allow people to turn onto Washington Street, Main Street, in the winter where the road gets a little bit narrower. Cars will park too close enough to the corner where they didn't feel like to get around. So staff has put together an ordinance and brought that as a proposal to the city council.
My question is, I'd like to back up to the RLO's proposal. I did have a couple questions. On the overlay decision, I think it's a little, I'm sorry, I just skipped through. Just a question to draw, is the overlay decision creation or designation of the overlay decision maybe initiated by the time it comes to a plan to use in the overlay, in order to make the property within the area supposed to be included in the district? And then later, so it's clear, it says that the petition is subject to being signed with a requirement of detection of one of the municipalities that has the authority to commit to ordinance to be included in the court. My question is, at what point is this actually beginning? Is it, when the signature about this started because the petition was asked to have the petition, or when it says introduction in the ordinance, and at that time it's on, no, no unit in that particular district that's assigned a rental property, no rental license? So when, when is this ordinance actually included?
I would say you know, absolutely, it's not that easy.
Okay, the petition, all its limitations to the person, the person at that time, the little word, the petition is subject to return, so this engine, the timing, the management of the business. Again, that, that's an introduction, and that's changed, and the property owner cannot sell the property for example, and that's the, the policy, the petition process is starting. So I'm asking, it says a kind of introduction of ordinance. That's what I'm trying to clarify. When, you know, if, if I own a property in a, a closed district, the petition is being presented with a pretty first, I own a property, I'm now getting offer on my property, they want to change it to a rental. Can I legally still at that point sell that house? You know, if I close before the ordinance is approved? I'm trying to get some sense here. Is the problem with owning a property?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, you know, it, it says, well, the petition is being collected, it's a pretty good, pretty good, something that's an offer, it's a property offer. You know, is that legal? It's a, 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 it's[1791.92]